Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that our proceedings tonight are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak for them and present it to our city clerk. You will be called upon at the appropriate time. I will now call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council. City Council as the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority. This is our regular meeting for April 9th. We will have an invocation tonight offered by our Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Assistant City Attorney Robert Koo. If you can and you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, the Eternal Father, we're thankful, Father, to be together as a group of thy children, to put our hands in the local government and to lend our hearts to the task that we might, we ask that we might be blessed so that we are able to carry forth thy dictates. We humbly offer, Father, that as we go about our business tonight, that we might dedicate this to thee and that we might be blessed with a small measure of thy intelligence and thy wisdom to do those things in accordance with thy will. We ask also, Father, that thou see fit to continue to bless our first responders and our military, that they might be protected and watched over, and that, Father, that all those things that we stand in need of, that because we are frail, we do not know how to express, we might be blessed. For, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Assistant City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three special presentations. So we have two proclamations. We will begin our first one tonight with the proclamation for the Child Abuse Awareness Month to the San Bernardino County Children's Network. I believe Doreen Ivory is here. So I'll go ahead and read this, and then I'll invite you up. Whereas all children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides, to be free from harm, and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met, state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the purpose of promoting community involvement in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas more than 32,000 children in San Bernardino County were referred to Children and Family Services for suspected child abuse and neglect in 2018, and whereas the adverse childhood experiences study conducted by Doctors Vincent J. Felitti and Robert F. Anda demonstrates long-term health, social, and economic risks that result from childhood trauma, and whereas the prevention of child abuse requires rigorous solutions, energy, strength, determination, and commitment from concerned citizens and the entire community, the County of San Bernardino provides services and professionals in the field of child abuse who are dedicated and compassionate and skilled in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas the Blue Ribbon, as the international symbol for child abuse prevention, the San Bernardino County Children's Network, in partnership with the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, the member agencies of the San Bernardino County's Children Policy Council, and Child Abuse Prevention Committee, have planned a Blue Ribbon media campaign, the 21st Annual Shine a Light on Child Abuse Awards Breakfast during the month of April to increase awareness of child abuse. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Darcy McNaboe, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, proclaim the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Grand Terrace and encourage citizens, organizations, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and other entities in the community to engage in activities and events that assist in the efforts to prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs. So we have a proclamation signed by all the council members, and it is presented this ninth day of April 2019. If you would, please come to the lectern and say a few words to us about your initiative, and then we'll have a photo with the council and present you with the plaque.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and esteemed council members. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As Mayor McNaboe stated in the proclamation, in 2018, in San Bernardino County, countywide we experienced over 32,000 child abuse referrals that were called into the child abuse hotline. And as of January 31st of this year, there are over 6,500 children and youth that are placed in some sort or form of foster placement within San Bernardino County. So it is a very troubling and sobering statistics that I just read off. And Children's Network as an agency is dedicated to really address many of these concerns regarding our children and families throughout the county and within Grand Terrace. And we provide and have launched a number of different campaigns, media, educational campaigns, that include positive parenting and child development, child abuse and exploitation prevention, father engagement, maternal mental health, as well as mentoring. So I just encourage you all and all of your residents in Grand Terrace to just embrace this movement, to really focus on the positive effects of mentoring, the positive effects of father involvement, and all the areas that we can really work to enhance our families' well-being in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to present you with the plaque, and we would like to have an opportunity Our next presentation is for the DMV Donate Life California Month. And the Van Campens are here, correct? Okay. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, whereas more than 113,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 20 people die each day waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. Whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California. Whereas at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. Whereas a single individual's donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Whereas over 15 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. Whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Darcy McNaboe, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, proclaim the month of April 2019 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Grand Terrace, and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org or www.donatevidaCalifornia.org, and signed by all of the council members. Presented this ninth day of April 2019, we have the proclamation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens, thank you very much for that proclamation. We appreciate the city's support year after year in issuing one. I'm not going to go through the numbers again. You captured that very well. So yes, there is an urgent need throughout the country and within the state. The only thing I would add is you don't need to wait until you renew your driver's license. You can go to that website and get the equivalent of the pink dot on your driver's license at any time if you don't have it, if it's something you just forgot to do last time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your work in this, too. So we have a walk-run challenge that I will share with the council members. And we have one final presentation tonight, and it says, "Presentation to the City of Grand Terrace from Nikki Cook and the 2019 California Mayor's Cup Cyber Competition Winners, Grand Terrace High School."
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council residents. My name is Nikki Cook. I'm with the California Mayor's Cyber Cup, and I would also like to actually introduce Donna Woods and Suzanne Motta of the same company.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you. Thank you, distinguished council members and Madam Mayor, for having us this evening. My name is Donna Woods, and I serve as the Academic Relations Manager for California Cyber Hub. We're going to explain a little bit about that and what the California Mayor's Cup is, and then invite the team up and their leader Benjamin to present their winning cup to you. So it's very exciting what they were able to do this year. The Mayor's Cup throughout the state of California was held on February 23rd with the statewide sponsors that you see there. This was held throughout the state. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. You have it here. Great. Thank you. Thank you. It's a statewide competition hosted out through regions all throughout California. In this case, 10 different regions at 12 different host sites, all the way from Northern California to Southern California, with the kickoff being right in Sacramento's capital with senators and assemblymen. Communities came together throughout the teams to support and celebrate cybersecurity as it impacts every industry sector, not just cyber, but healthcare, retail, law enforcement, all of that, education. So students competing throughout the state were from middle school and high school, and the teams competed to win their city the coveted Mayor's Trophy Cup. Here in the Inland Empire, we had over 36 teams competing for this one cup. These were the different regions that were represented throughout California. So you can see here that we had Mount Senia Cento College was our satellite campus, and Marina Valley College was the host college for the Inland Empire Desert Region. Altogether, again, 12 regions competing simultaneously with over 1,300 competitors throughout the state, 270 teams, 45 of those being brand-new teams to the cyber competition, and over 150 cities and mayors represented.
So why is this important, you might ask yourselves? So what we're trying to do is build a cybersecurity workforce for the future. We know that this is something that impacts, as Donna said, every industry sector. There is currently more jobs available in the country and in the state of California than there are skilled technicians to fill those positions. So we currently have about 37,000 available jobs in the state of California. In our Riverside, San Bernardino metro area, there is almost 700 positions that are available. And the volume of people or applicants qualified to apply for those is very low. So we're offering these cybersecurity competitions as a way to, you know, pique the interest of our students and get them interested in these pathways. My name is Suzanne Motta. I'm a representative of the California Community Colleges. I work in the region supporting all 12 of our community colleges in Riverside and San Bernardino, and I'm currently overseeing a project in our region that has six colleges participating in adding cybersecurity pathways for students and encouraging activities like these. So we used our strong workforce, project funds, to support the Mayor's Cup in the Inland Empire Desert Region.
Thank you, Suzanne. It was excellent with what Suzanne did and the entire chancellors from the community colleges and the DSNs, because this competition was absolutely free to every student competing, each school, all of their parents, and included snacks throughout the four-hour competition and a catered lunch, all the awards. So it happened by sponsors, but the premier sponsors being our local deputy sector navigators and our community colleges. It's very important because we also have academic pathways from the middle schools and high schools to feed into our colleges, so students have a very succinct and clearly-aligned career pathway. The whole purpose, again, as Suzanne mentioned, is to bring more cybersecurity awareness, to engage community members, to have the parents come out, the siblings come out, as well as business representation. Also, to celebrate the community as being the front line, we are all responsible, have to be responsible cyber citizens, right? On our own personal devices, and even when we take those personal devices to our workplace and to our school. We are the first and the front line for that cyber defense. So each of us is individual, and then collectively when we go to our organizations. This year, after this year's Mayor's Cup, is a new launch. The Mayor's Cup was just the beginning of that launch. The competition is not just a one-day event, but the kickoff for our goal for this year, and that's to launch 1,000 new teams in California by 2020. The Mayor's Cup in 2020 will be held in October. So all the middle schools, the high schools, our community colleges that are working towards this effort, as well as our industry partners, 1,000 new teams. California is leading the nation. Right now, as we speak, the national cyber competition for cyber patriots occurring. Of the 26 teams that went to nationals out of the 6,300 competing in the nation, 24 are from California. These are some images from the students that competed in our region. Obviously, you can see the winning team from Grand Terrace. So we'll have Benjamin come up now if he would please, and also all the other students. As you can see, we love having females in the competition, and what we love most about our region is that we have the greatest level of diversity, cultural diversity, which is critical for this industry. Benjamin, I'll let you introduce your team.
Hello, everyone. My name is Benjamin Garcia, and I am the president of the Cyber Titan Club at Grand Terrace High School. To begin, I would like to thank all of the Grand Terrace City Council members for taking the time out of your busy days to listen to us speak about our accomplishments today. We really appreciate the opportunity you've given us today. Grand Terrace High School only being established since 2012, and our Cyber Titan team being open for around three years now shows you how this is very new to all of us. This is the first year the Cyber Titans have competed in the California Mayor's Cyber Cup, and this also marks the first year that we have taken first place. Being in the Cyber Titan Club has given many opportunities that will support our future aspirations in life. This trophy represents our hard work, dedication, persistence, and most of all, our teamwork. Our amazing school has been kind enough to also recognize this accomplishment by creating posters of our victory and placing them in the ROP classes. This has been an amazing, life-changing experience for all of us, and we would like to thank Grand Terrace for giving us a platform to show everyone what we can do. And now, we would like to present to you the California Mayor's Cyber Cup.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
The students are also bringing up with them, they all receive certificates throughout the state from their local assemblymen. So this is from the assembly members here from Jose Medina's office in Riverside for representing the whole Inland Empire.
This is something else where you guys did all the work, but we get awarded something. And you said we get to keep it for a year, but I'm really hoping that this stays in our city. And I know if we have this type of a team setting the pace, that they're only going to look to you and say, yes, we have to do it, we have to keep this up. Do my colleagues want to say anything at this time? Okay. Thank you so much for all your efforts, and best wishes to you and your careers. I know you're on your way. Let's give them a round of applause. So we will move on to the rest of our agenda. We have a consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they'll be acted upon by City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to move items from the consent calendar at this time? All right. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move the consent calendar. Approval?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff, and items may also be agendized perhaps for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Thank you. First speaker will be Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. I failed to have an opportunity last time, given the public comment period, to talk about the importance of our budget and trying to figure out a way to increase the money to be allocated for the Sheriff's Department budget. And it's not lost on me, because I spend a lot of time in Sacramento, that we currently have eight bills going through Sacramento to increase taxes, anything from water to soft drinks to tires. Pretty soon, we're going to be taxed to breathe. So given that, I don't see that we have an opportunity to do anything, to have any type of petition to create a tax increase for the city. But I do believe there's ways, having lived my corporate life for almost 42 years, redesigning an organization and a corporation, eight major reorganizations and still living through most of them, there's two ways to do it. You either sell your way out of it, or you cut your way out of it. And so I would propose to the city that we take a hard look at our budget to look at where we can have cuts to save and to have reallocations for budget for the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Our second speaker tonight is Heather Perry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Heather Perry. I am the district representative for the new supervisor, Dawn Rao, who you met last month. I apologize I wasn't able to attend with her. I was sent to a meeting in Mentone. So just really quick, before, I've been here about seven weeks in the county. I started at the beginning of February. I came from state legislator's office, local state legislator's office, and with him for three years. I just wanted to bring some updates, besides introducing myself, bring some updates from the county. The first being that now with 911 in our area, that you can text, which is sometimes important for safety reasons to be able to communicate by text. The other is our 211 system for information and for resources. We now have more Spanish-speaking operators, so we can service more people. And the last thing that I wanted to bring up, having to do with the county, is one of our visions this past six months or during our six months is Vision for Safety. Now, I apologize, the last batch I had had information on the back, and when I brought it in, I realized there's no information on the back. So I'll just read really quick. You can, if you go to what's on the front here, visionforsafety.com, you can find the application for what I'm about to talk about, and that is nominate a safety hero. We are taking applications for the county through May 31st. We are taking applications for the county through May 31st. So, it's not what you might normally think of as a safety hero, as far as police, fire, those are very important, but this is for a safety hero as far as an individual in San Bernardino County who promotes public safety and preparedness in their neighborhoods, schools, and workplace. Vision for Safety is seeking nominees for safety heroes in hopes of recognizing people in our community who have made a difference by always striving to make their communities safer and better prepared for emergencies. So I'll give you several examples. A person who started a neighborhood watch group, a teacher who encourages safety after school programs, I'm sorry, safe after-school programs, a businessperson who encourages their employees for CPR, to learn CPR and other life-saving techniques, child who helps their families prepare for earthquake or fire by practicing, or a person who has helped law enforcement with a tip led to an arrest or prevented someone from getting hurt. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I appreciate you being here. We look forward to seeing more of you. And if you'll forward the information that you have on your form there.
Absolutely.
Maybe we can get it out through some of our channels here locally.
We'd love to, and we'd love to get people from the community of Grand Terrace to be nominated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have one more request to speak. Bobby Forbes.
Good evening, council. Thank you. This is not on the agenda, but this does have to do with the animals, but it's not on the agenda. So I know that there was a meeting last week at Witty's in the morning regarding the sign ordinance. I was not able to attend that meeting. I would like to have a workshop, or at least you to consider some way that we can have lost and found pet signs up in town, date them, do something that they can be there for a certain number of days. We need this. The internet is not, it works. Sometimes the neighbors will see a post for their dog that's lost, but not everybody's on the internet, and certainly not everybody's on 92313, your lost and found pets. So please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
And if I might add, not that we have to wait till Monday till you open, that we go get the sign and give a deposit, nothing like that, just that we can figure out a way to have homemade signs go up for a certain number of days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. All right, that will conclude our public comments. I'll bring it back to City Council for the communications. And before we get into individual member communications, we have an item number six on our agenda, which is a council ad hoc committee report. It's an update about the National Orange Show noise complaint issue. And so, who is our designated? Ah, Mayor Protam. Please give us your update.
Thank you, Mayor. We will do a quick thumbnail sketch. Councilmember Robles, I, city manager and city attorney, went to meet with the National Orange Show. There were more of them than there were of us, but we believe we started a good seed. The City of Grand Terrace supports the National Orange Show with respect to bringing entertainment to the area. We're not opposed to that. We would be a little bit crazy if we did do that, but we also believe that it's important for there to be control. And so, we talked about that, and we are still working on a controlled circumstance, whose ordinances they are under, and so on. The City of Grand Terrace doesn't take any position so far as whether we like their music or not. You know, that was something that was brought up, and we said, we don't care. And bottom line is, is that there's a thump, 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 coming across our, you know, in our city, and regardless of the number of people that actually respond, you know, we're all familiar with what that is, and it's low-frequency noise. And actually, the National Orange Show people, the people that are on the board, were woefully uninformed in relation to what that, you know, what that precipitates. And we went into some of the health issues and some of the liability issues, and they were interested in understanding that a little bit better. We're going to work with them a little bit to see if we can't make that clear. It really comes down to a quality-of-life issue for the citizens of Grand Terrace. We've had lots of concerns raised through the years. Sometimes the concerns diminish a little bit. The Orange Show was taking that as a diminishing problem, and we did straighten, in fact, Councilwoman Robles specifically straightened them out and said, hey, that's not what it is. They're getting tired of complaining and not getting any response. So, we set that record straight. They acknowledged that the thump was integral to their style, the style of the music and the entertainment, and we explained that it takes a different piece of equipment to create that circumstance, and if it can be produced, it can be monitored as well. And so, you know, the important thing is, is that the health issues, anxiety issues, headaches, and so on are just not worth the exchange. We gave them some feedback in relation to their published policy. They had published a policy on how they were going to react to us. We gave them a few red lines. We share concerns about those impacts, concerns while a phone number was listed for people to respond to. The phone number wasn't really active, and nobody could get through. And so, here's what they decided, what we decided as a joint commission, to try to start towards some progress, and that is having more phone lines available to receive complaint calls. They agreed to do this. Then we suggested that they hire a consultant, a third-party consultant, to do a study of the quote-unquote "thump" impacts. Because ordinary, in their dissertation or their policy, they talked about three different pieces of equipment that they used to be able to monitor sound impacts, and none of them really do what we're concerned about, low-frequency noise. So, we did have some discussion about that. We're going to continue to engage with the Orange Show to see if the consultant can evaluate the impacts. We're going to engage with the City of San Bernardino to learn its position, whether it believes it has authority to regulate the show, and we're going to encourage our residents to share their concerns and complaints with us, and if necessary, we'll bring in the cavalry. So, we're going to take care of the situation. We're on it, and we're doing the best we can, but that was the first meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So I know in here it asks for direction about whether we want to go to San Bernardino and see what their view is, opinion is, but I believe that our ad hoc committee members have an idea that that's what they'd like to do. So is there any other comments by colleagues that weren't part of the ad hoc committee on what you'd like to see as far as direction? Councilmember Allen? No? Okay. Sounds like you two are doing a great job. Keep up the good work. All right, so we will move on to individual reports. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I attended the Water Education for Latino Leaders Conference in Long Beach on March 28th and 29th, and that was a real eye-opener. I assure you, I learned things, I'm, you know, I am so glad that I attended it. The first day there, we visited the Carson Treatment Plant, which treats enough wastewater every day to fill the Rose Bowl three times. And that's wastewater from toilet to tap, but they don't put it in a tap, they put it back in the aquifer. But it's clean enough for that. And then we went to the, through a bunch of seminars and learned a lot about how many people in California are lacking safe water. There are really millions, and there are hundreds of communities that don't have really safe water, dozens of schools that the state has to provide bottled water for. And one of our speakers earlier, when Mr. Gallo got up, and he mentioned about taxes, and rest assured, there's one on the ballot that are going to be about a water fee, delivery fee. But I encourage all of our residents to be open-minded about things like this and study the facts and see, you know, and try to understand the problem that we're faced with, you know, with the salt in the sea, and even in our own county, in the Empire. And dare say, I've had parents in our own city talk about the drinking fountains in our schools. So, it's an infrastructure problem, and that's an expensive fix for a lot of communities. And so, that's what they talked about a lot. And some of the other items that snuck out during this conference were how CalRecycle is, there's some new regs going to be brought down on cities about cleaning up their trash, like washing their trash, because China's not willing to take it anymore. Southern California Edison talked about the power safety shut-offs because of the problem with forest fires and programming, and also, they're installing, if any of you are interested in observing the forests, high-density cameras have been installed throughout California for Edison's areas. You can go access them online and watch. So, another question that came up from a resident the other day, and I couldn't answer it, I haven't really gotten an answer yet either, is what pesticides and insecticides do we use in our dog park? The concern is there about, you know, what will the dogs, you know, get? So I'm trying to find an answer for that, and I was hoping I could, you know, get some feedback this evening on that for them. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Just got a quick comment. I was getting phone calls this week about a vendor going around in our city and hanging out over by the middle school, and I called Mr. Duffy, and the city staff took care of it. Couple side notes. When you buy from those vendors, they'll keep coming. Those vendors aren't licensed, those vendors don't have health cards, they don't have anywhere, I don't know how they clean their hands, but one experience I'll give you, when I worked at the federal prison, we had an inmate with tuberculosis of the spine, and he acquired that by eating off one of those vendors' things, unpasteurized cheese, and it got into his digestive system, went through his spine, and pretty much killed him. So, you just got to think of a lot of things what could happen. I mean, I'm not trying to do a scare tactic, but if you don't want it in your city, don't associate, don't buy it from them, and they'll move on. But if you do see it, you know, please contact the city, because, you know, we want to keep the city at a certain level of cleanness and security and safety. And me personally, I don't want the vendors hanging around the middle school or the high school, because I don't know what they're up to and what else they might be selling. Not to blame for anything, but, you know, I know they got to make money, but I don't want them to do it like that in our city, and I'm worried about the public welfare of our children. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to do this quickly. I sit on the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee for the legal cities, and we met March 29th, and we had very extensive briefings on the state budget and proposed legislation coming out. First, I'll go on some pension reform update. CalFire had a ruling on airtime, and this is where whether you worked for a public agency or not, you could just buy what they call airtime. You didn't actually work, leave, come back, and want to buy time, maybe you sold. So, the court said that there is no vesting in that, so there is no obligation to fund that. There was also pretty long discussions on how that affected healthcare benefits, and it's a bit too long to get into here, but there's a lot of unfunded liabilities in healthcare for retiree benefits, and you'll be hearing more and more about that. Some really good things for our city that were mentioned. Prop 68, that was approved by the voters in June 2018, is going to provide cities a minimum of $200,000 in grants to improve local parks. And so, that's the floor for us, and $200,000 is a nice amount of money for us. There's also going to be $1 billion in additional funding for parks, safe drinking water, recycling, and flood protection. The governor, of course, has an ambitious plan for providing more housing stock, specifically in low-to-moderate-income strata. There's Senate Bill 2 that's going to be available for funding and updating general-specific and community plans. So there's going to be actually money to help cities whose planning efforts are too costly and take a backseat to public safety in our more urging priorities. So that's quite significant. We're a pretty diverse state, and there's some entities just like us that are very limited in money. Prop 1 Housing Funds, again, there's with the elimination of redevelopment 2011, no state housing bond since 2006, but Prop 1 has $4 billion in a housing bond that was approved in November of 2018, and it represents the first infusion of new housing funds in nearly a decade. The governor has committed to expedite the allocation of these funds in 2019, and cities should be partnering now with local developers and nonprofits, and prepare to apply for funding to build affordable housing in your city. So, that is something that I think we should clearly run and try to meet. You know, we did have some partnership with Habitat for Humanity that might be an interesting course. There's some billions in cap and trade funding. And in the other arena of the proposed budget, there's $500 million annually for low-income housing tax credits, $500 million to the California Housing Finance Agency for moderate and low-income, moderate income housing production, $500 million for housing emergency shelters and environmental streamlining for construction. And finally, there's Senate Bill 128 by Senator Beal, which is going to remove, proposes to remove the existing 55% voter requirement for infrastructure financing district bond And they're just saying that it'd probably be a vehicle for more changes in that. And I lied about finally. Finally, we had Senator John Morlech, who sat and had a discussion with us. He's pushing to have a platform using, for financial filings, and we sat and talked about the state of affairs of our finance situation in the state, and he's quite interesting. He was the treasurer of Orange County when it filed for bankruptcy, and he was the county supervisor in Orange County during the housing bust. And he's just quite a phenomenal gentleman and just a really creative person and strong conservative on fiscal matters, and was really a treat for me to sit and have that discussion with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles, Mayor Protam, Doug Wilson.
Thank you. Just two items, Mayor, thanks. First and foremost, when you go to opening up your door, when somebody knocks on your door, rings your doorbell, be careful out there. You never know, in fact, I will side with Councilman Hesse here on his issue of vendors. You never know for sure whether or not somebody has a business license, or insurance, or even a contractor's license. And let me tell you, the big thing is, is that if Joe the Tree Guy shows up at your door, knocks on your door, goes out there and starts chopping up your tree, like they did over where I was, and actually snuck across the tree and got it into my yard, he falls out of that thing and he hits his head on a block wall, guess whose insurance it goes on? I mean, despite the fact that he's dead, which will, you know, you'll never unsee in your life, on top of it, you know, your kids are going to be impacted by it, and the rest of it. Unfortunately, this happens a lot on the weekends. You get a lot of people that'll be scouting around. The easiest way to tell is to ask them, when they give you the card they give you, they're obligated to put their insurance information on there, or at least furnish that if you ask them, and they're supposed to have a license number on the card if they have a license. All right? And if they are posting a little pasty on the site of their car or something, or their truck, that shows all the nifty stuff about contact information and email and all those good things, right down at the bottom, if they're an actual legitimate contractor, they have to put their contract. they're a contractor, an actual legitimate contractor, they have to put their contractor's license number down on the bottom. They're obligated to do it by law. They don't do it, they're fined. So, and anybody that's a legitimate contractor knows that. So rather than get yourself in a situation where somebody owns your house for the rest of your life, or something that your kids are, are not going to be able to unsee eventually, be cautious. That's all I'm saying. And then on top of that, I just wanted to mention that a personal friend of mine, Corey Sorensen, he's been living in Utah now for a little while, but he was a former citizen of this city for about 15 or 20 years. He was a community volunteer. Every cleanup day, he and his sons were out there, you know, arms and elbows. He was a bishop for his church. He had a debilitating disease, and it finally, he finally succumbed from it last week. He raised five, five sons, one daughter. The, one of the sons plays for the Kansas City Chiefs, Daniel Sorensen, and is a, is a well-known solid citizen. So I just like to, you know, let that information out. Anybody that knew Corey, the funeral is next week, or this, actually, this weekend, and it's going to be up in American Fork. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The State of the Region Economic Forecast by economist John Hughes. And just to give a little bit of an update of the highlights of his presentation, I won't be as entertaining as he is. He has hats and things like that, and animals. The inland region, as in his estimation, continues to have a powerful job creation, and it is really the growth industry of the, of the state right now. The, the poverty rate is falling with the job creation, and so that's good news for the inland region. But he does see dangers in our economy. And so he looks at the idea that the U.S. job growth has stopped. In our region, generally, legs behind the rest of the country a little bit. So even though we still have job growth in our, in our region, perhaps in the future, that's going to slow and, and maybe even stop. So he's watching an interest yield curve, which many times gives an indicator of a recession. And he's saying, maybe, maybe we need to be cautious for what's coming in 2020. He's saying that other dangers in the economy are tariffs, the national government shutdown. And if, if that's a danger, again, to have another shutdown, that will cause problems. And other perceived policy chaos at the national level, those all affect our economy here. He's also seeing some hollowing out of the middle class, the affordability of housing in our area, which has always traditionally been good pricing for housing. Our housing is going up, which is good for those that are homeowners. But for those in low and moderate income levels, they're having a hard time finding suitable housing. The cost of electricity is going to pose a problem, and our lack of educational attainment. And so he, he did give a whole discussion about engaging our community colleges and, and the goals that they are, they are looking at in San Bernardino County, and the initiatives that we are having in San Bernardino County to help individuals go to community college. On April 3, I attended the OmniTrans board meeting, but I'm just going to give kind of the highlights of what's been going on. There is an ad hoc committee that is forming between OmniTrans and the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. We will be having an ad hoc, there's, there's three members from each of these boards that are meeting this Tuesday, the 23rd. And the purpose of that is to discuss current issues and provide policy guidance related to funding allocation to address what they call funding deficit that OmniTrans is facing in the future. They're facing, facing a huge deficit coming in 2020. And a lot of it has to do with a very low fare box recovery for their, their bus routes. And so it will be an interesting discussion about where we see the future of bus transportation in this, in this region. On April 4, I had, they gave us a follow up to comments that were made at the April 3 board meeting. We have had a number of people come to this board meeting since I joined the board every single month for three months. And they are complaining about this service that's called Access. And it, it is there for disabled riders. And it's a smaller bus that shows up, and it actually assists them if they're in a wheelchair or they have ability moving. And it seems that, that OmniTrans has not been very focused on making sure that their Access clients are getting the service that is intended. And it's, it's interesting to me, because every time there's been somebody showing up to the board meeting to complain, there are like three or four different administrators that meet with them in the lobby and hear about their complaints. And, and every month, it seems like there are, well, they're the same people that come, but there are additional people that come with their complaints. And so they are giving us an update because they say this time they will make sure that they address these issues. So I am, I am hoping that their expectations are met. And apparently, they outsource this service. So OmniTrans doesn't even provide the service. They outsource and contract with somebody else. And they really need to hold them to the contract standards that were set. And then lastly, there is upcoming public hearings that are scheduled. There are 21 public community meetings. They start out on April 2, and they go through April 10. So tomorrow is the last one. This is preparation for presenting the fiscal year 2020 service plan to the Board of Directors in May. The primary item of the discussion is proposed fare increase in the upcoming year. And the Board of Directors have authorized the call for these public meetings. More information can be found at the omnitrans.org website. I imagine there's an opportunity to give your input if you're not able to go to these meetings, since most of them probably have already taken place. And then lastly, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Board Meeting. And so items that I did not give updates on for the previous subcommittees, we had our quarterly conference with legal counsel to hear about existing litigation. The board, during its open meeting, we appointed a new general counsel who will take the role beginning June 1 of this year. Our existing general counsel is retiring. We approved funds to, to the State Route 18 project in Apple Valley. It's a road construction project. And the residents and those that travel through the city of Apple Valley will probably be very happy when that construction is over with. We authorized the signing of a facilities relocation agreement with Southern California Edison for the mainline construction of the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. And we received a report on the inland economic growth and opportunity initiative. And that will end my report. We have no public hearings tonight on our agenda. We have no unfinished business. But before I move into new business, I'm going to ask, are there any changes or additions to our agenda with respect to new business?
Yes, Mayor. Staff would like to pull item number 10.
And that's the professional service agreement with KTUA to prepare the Grand Terrace Act of Transportation Plan and appropriation of bond funds therefor?
Yes, Mayor. We just want to be, go out and do a little more noticing before we bring this back to the council.
Because it is specific to Michigan Street?
Yes.
And we want to make sure that the residents on Michigan Street and theirabouts have an opportunity to give their input?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know when this might come back?
It'll be the next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. Thank you very much. So we will go back to item number seven, which is the adoption of an urgency ordinance and first reading and introduction of a regular ordinance, adding Chapter 12.56 to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, establishing regulations for wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right of way, and adoption of city council resolution establishing policies for small wireless facilities. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. This item before you is, as you said, the ordinance regulating wireless communication facilities in the public right of way. This item supports the 2030 goal number two, to maintain public safety, and will be presented tonight by the Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Robert Kueh of Alshire and Lander. Mr. Kueh.
Thank you, Mr. French. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. As Mr. French stated, my name is Robert Kueh. I'm your Assistant City Attorney. I'm here to do a presentation upon the adoption of two ordinances, one urgency, one regular, relating to the wireless telecommunications facilities within the city's public right of ways, and also to adopt a resolution setting up standards for what's going to be termed as small wireless facilities. So why are we here? Why are we doing this? Recently, there's been changes in the law by the FCC. It's a completely new landscape for small cells. And what small cells are essentially are gap fillers. They fill in the gaps between the giant cell towers that we've been putting up in recent years. They're typically mounted, as you can see, on light poles. And in this case, they are primarily focused on the public right of ways. Generally speaking, these sites or these facilities are about 50 feet, give or take, less than 28 cubic feet in equipment, and about 3 cubic feet in, in the panels themselves. So there is definitely a potential for widespread deployment. The FCC and the industry have been, wireless industry, that is, have been working very hard to essentially saturate cities and jurisdictions with these facilities to fill up gaps in service. The reason why there are so many facilities that are going to be deployed, as you can see, is that the range of these facilities are about 400 feet. So not, very small compared to your giant cell towers, which are meant to cover entire regions. These are intended to fill in spaces where there aren't enough coverage, there isn't enough coverage, and also to provide for the upcoming 5G service, which is the higher speed wireless internet connections for your cell phones and other internet-ready devices. And part of the changes that we're proposing are also in reaction to what the FCC has modified in relation to shot clocks. The, the, the short of this is that once an application is submitted to the city, the city has a certain number of days to essentially approve or deny the application. It used to be 150 days for new facilities. They've shortened it down to 60. That is a substantially less amount of time, and which eliminates, essentially eliminates our ability to go through a discretionary process. So in the past, what we've typically done is whenever a tower comes in, depending on the location, we will send it through the discretionary process before the planning commission. This effectively prevents us from doing that. If we don't meet this deadline, the order provides that that is deemed to be a violation of federal law. What that means exactly, we're not entirely sure. But the reason why we're revising the ordinance is to avoid that situation. So what this ordinance will do is essentially make the process of reviewing small wireless facilities administrative in nature, in the public right of way, administrative in nature, so that we can at least meet these deadlines. And just for clarification, it's 60 days for attachment to current structures and 90 days for new structures. So if you're attaching to a light pole, 60 days. If they're building a completely new structure, we get 90 days. But again, 90 days is still substantially shorter than the typical 150 days we would normally get under the old rules. They've also, what they've also done is impose additional new design standards, essentially throwing out the last, I would say, probably 20, 30 years worth of design standards that have been established. The new standards state that they have the, the, our aesthetic standards have to be reasonable, non-discriminatory, and objective and pre-published. And they need to be published on the city's website by April 14, 2019. That's coming up next week. That's part of the reason why we're going towards this urgency ordinance, to get everything in place in time to address this new FCC order's effective date. Now, the question then becomes, what do those aesthetic standards mean? What does it mean to be reasonable? What does it mean to be non-discriminatory? What does it mean to be objective and pre-published? At this point in time, given the newness of the order, the industry is not entirely sure. What we can figure is that the aesthetics requirements that are reasonable, and that they are technically feasible. And that gives us, that brings us a little bit closer to what aesthetic standards we can impose. But really, it's going to depend upon, unfortunately, what the wireless industry determines or helps us to figure out what is technically feasible. So is undergrounding everywhere technically feasible? Perhaps, perhaps not. It depends on the location. And it'll have to be, and you'll see later on, is that we're going to have to require a lot of feedback from the industry in addition to figuring out the practical ways to implement this new FCC order and our new ordinance. So tonight, the council is being presented with an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance. The purpose of the urgency ordinance is that it's effective immediately, and that way allows us to meet that April 14 deadline. Regular ordinance naturally requires two readings and takes 30 days after its adoption to be effective. So if we do a first reading tonight, we'll do a second reading at the next meeting, and 30 days after, the regular ordinance will be in effect. The purpose of the urgency ordinance obviously is to meet that deadline. And we are also adopting the, a resolution that establishes aesthetic standards for small wireless facilities. And I want to take a moment to address why we're doing those design standards for small wireless facilities as a, as a resolution, as a policy, as opposed to having it, the standards, put into the ordinance itself. The reason is that we anticipate the industry and the FCC to, and quite frankly, Congress, to change the rules on us in the next few years. So we wanted maximum flexibility. We learned our lesson the first time with this recent FCC order, giving us a very short timeframe to react, to draft something, to understand, to digest the order, and then to draft the subsequent ordinances to help us implement the order in the, in a correct way. So with the resolution, it allows us to react quickly. So what we can do is immediately draft a resolution, bring it to council, or, I'm sorry, amend the policy, bring it to council by resolution, have council adopt the policy by resolution that's effective immediately, as opposed to waiting 30 days. So we don't have to come back with an urgency ordinance to implement changes in standards and so forth. So before I go proceed with the recommendation, I wanted to point out that last night, we received a letter from Verizon, Verizon's representative, basically taking issue with certain portions of the ordinance. We're looking at the, the letter right now. We're going to determine, you know, where some of their claims may have merit or may not have merit, just to see what tweaks we will have to do with the ordinance and so forth. But, you know, at this time, the issue is that the law is constantly in flux. There's a pending lawsuit right now about this order, and it's not clear whether or not that lawsuit will proceed and be successful for the cities. And most importantly, even though that letter recommends that the city council delay adoption of these ordinances in this resolution, the letter ignores the fact that the April 14 deadline is coming regardless of what they say. If April 14 rolls around and we don't have any of these standards in place, then they can install facilities on our street light poles without any design standards in place. What does that mean? That means wires hanging off the facilities potentially. That could mean boxes put in, put in our right of ways without any concern for the city's needs or desires. What this ordinance will do, will essentially put standards in place so that they at least have to follow, we can at least tell them, look, we have these standards, and you have to follow them, at least as the first shot. Now, for the ordinance, we are expecting to come back to the council to amend the ordinance and the design standards. That's essentially primarily due to the fact that we expect the law to be changed, and we expect the FCC to be putting out additional interpretive guidance on their order, which, as I said before, overturns years and years of case, case law. So with this recommendation is that we recommend that the city council waive further reading and adopt the urgency ordinance, which establishes Chapter 12.56 to the, adds the, the chapter to the municipal code, which provides regulations and design standards for wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right of way, to adopt a regular, or, I'm sorry, to introduce and conduct the first reading of a regular ordinance, adopting the same standards, the same, it's all the same policies as the urgency ordinance, and finally, adopting a resolution which also adopts the standards for small wireless facilities. And with that, my report is complete. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kueh. Questions from staff at this time, or for staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Do we, based on this letter that we received from last night, I mean, if we pass this ordinance tonight, this urgency ordinance, there's not going to be any threat of litigation based on this letter against what we got? They're just making suggestions or something?
The, the letter hasn't explicitly threatened litigation. In fact, doesn't even talk about that at this point. But it does, as you said, make suggestions and what they view as the correct interpretation of the law. We haven't had a chance to dig deeply into the, the letter just yet. I anticipate doing that in the coming weeks. And, you know, and if they have some legitimate suggestions and concerns, then that's certainly something that we can bring back to the council. Or we'll, I'll discuss with staff, and we'll draft something. or, well, I'll discuss with staff and we'll draft something up and then we'll bring it back to council.
Is this going to, do we have any control over the friend, or do they have to pay a franchise fee for the use of the city's right-of-way?
Under California law, there's a code section that was adopted a number of years ago that essentially says that wireless, these, these companies, they have free access to our right-of-way.
Will ADA access get in the way of any of that?
Pardon?
Does the ADA get in the way of any of that?
In terms of redesigning the, well, what they're typically going to be doing is going to be attaching things to our, our existing street light poles.
Okay.
I can conceive this, I mean, if, if they destroy something, or, I'm sorry, not destroy, take something out to install something and they reconstruct it, I would assume and imagine that the ADA standards would be, continue to be effective there.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hesse. Did you have questions? Councilmember Hesse?
Wilson, yes, I'm sorry. Hello, um, questions? If they're going to install it on any existing, or if they had to make another pole, install a new pole, can the city, you know, I know we'll pass ordinance, but can we put on there, hey, you know, if you're putting in new poles or something, you have to put in streetlights in that area, because I know we have some part of the city's without streetlights, you know, can that be a recommendation on that? Or do they just could do what they want? Because, you know, you said it's a, a free-for-all and then, and it passed state legislation. I think the reason why it passed state legislation, because some politician got paid off by the Verizon stuff. But I want to get something benefit for the city instead of them just using our light poles and everything, you know, we need, has to be some kind of benefit for our city that our residents can have instead of just free access for Verizon to make money or somebody else make money when we have our needs for our cities and our residents.
At this point, my understanding is that they, the industry has focused primarily on installing facilities on existing poles. They've resisted efforts to get them to build things that they see as not within what we're allowed to require them to do. I feel that, that is, that might be something that we can try to explore for, for, for future amendment to the ordinance. Quite frankly, right now, we, we are, for lack of a better term, we're in, trying to get these standards in place as a, as a bit of a, as a bit of a, almost a panic mode to ensure that they don't come in and just override us. But that, that is certainly something that we can look into in the future to see if that's possible. And if even the, the wireless telecommunications, communication companies are even willing to, to do that, because if they're willing to do it, then maybe that's, that's a possibility.
Well, that's the thing, because, you know, some, I know some are dead zones here in Grand Terrace. There's no lights in there, and I just don't want them just to put a pole or plant on a tree, I mean, make it, you know, as easy as possible for them, but, you know, I want us to have some kind of ordinance on there to, you know, make a benefit for our residents.
Right.
So, that was just a question I had on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Wilson?
Mayor, I'll try to bring, make this brief. It seems to me that, well, first, let me ask the city attorney. The, the jurisdiction that is forcing this down our throat is?
It's the federal government, the FCC.
FCC. Now, the FCC board, if I remember right, is a, is an amalgamation of politicians that can easily be led one direction or the other.
That, that's certainly one way of putting it.
Okay. And so, in this case, what we've got is, we've got the big telecommunications companies pimping this for quite a while, and, and obviously, it's only going to be to their advantage to be able to do this, to be able to tout their service. So, in the law run, what would keep us from, I mean, if this is as onerous as we think it could be, what's to keep us from declaring a moratorium in, in the city on any new equipment until we get a chance to actually have enough time to do something with this?
The FCC has specifically prohibited us from engaging in any moratorium.
Wow. Gee, this is as good as the state. Wow. Okay. All right. You've answered my questions. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, two comments. With respect to Commissioner, Councilmember Allen's question on page 141 of the packet, we do provide a provision stating all facilities permitted pursuant to this chapter shall comply with the ADA. So, we do have that provision in there. Second, with respect to the letter from Verizon, this letter, along with letters from other carriers, are being distributed to every city that's pretty much adopting an ordinance in compliance with the FCC order. In fact, last week, in my other city, Lockton, out of Flint Ridge, we received a letter from AT&amp;T the night before we adopted the ordinance. So, these are standard letters, not to diminish them in any way. In many ways, they do provide some good comments for us to look at and consider, but whether it's a threat of litigation, there's nothing indicating that, and in my discussions with AT&amp;T last week, we didn't get any of that sense either. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments, and we will open it up at this time for a public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Well, closed public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion on this item.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt, adoption of an urgency ordinance in first reading and introduction of a regular ordinance heading chapter 12.56 to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, establishing regulations for wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right-of-way and adoption of city council resolution establishing policies for small wireless facilities.
Second.
Okay. Are you motioning for all of the items, one, two, and three?
Shall I read them? All, all, I am. I recommend.
Okay. And your second includes that?
Correct.
Okay. And so, I believe Councilmember Allen also read the title, so it doesn't need to be read again, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, if you would, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Portem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Move to item eight, which is an ordinance amending Title VI Animals of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by repealing in their entirety Chapter 6.04 and Chapter 6.08 and adopting a new Chapter 6.04 Animal Control and a new Chapter 6.08 Animal Licensing and Vaccinations. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you. My name is Sandra Molina, as indicated by the mayor, Director of Planning and Development Services. As indicated by the mayor, this is an ordinance to revise Title VI. This item is consistent with our vision, 2030 vision, particularly our mission to preserve and protect our community. It does so by establishing requirements for dog licensing and vaccinations, establishes requirements for the care of animals, rabies control and bites, and public nuisance animals, just to name a few of the provisions within the ordinance. Just a bit of background, the city council reorganized code enforcement, beginning with this fiscal year, to incorporate animal control services. And so, now, field services are provided by city staff. We contract for sheltering services, veterinary services. As part of the process of the reorganization of providing these services, staff review the animal control provisions and is proposing that these two chapters be read adopted. So, the staff report did provide a discussion of the proposed chapters, and so, my presentation would briefly go over those. So, with regard to Chapter 6.04 Animal Control, these provisions contain most of the animal control regulations and requirements. The definition section is substantially updated from what was previously provided. We have definitions for, for public nuisance animals, which is actually a very good new section, because this allows us to address things like barking dogs, loose animals that are, or dogs that are repeatedly loose and let, or let out. So, now, we have a process to address those type of situations. It provides for rabies control, animal bites and quarantine, so how do we address that when there's an animal bite? It also allows for, and, and a previous ordinance did too, but this one also includes that when a, a dog is impounded, that there's a provision to be able to recoup those, that cost of the impoundment. But I will add that it is the city's policy on loose dogs, so if our animal-controlled field officers capture a, a dog that's loose, the first effort they make is to return that dog to the owner. And several times, dogs have been taken to the home where the dog lives and returned. We advise that dog owner that loose animals is a violation. We don't cite them, but if we pick up that dog again, then we will cite. So, there's also provisions for animal care relating to food and shelter and that you're not allowed to abandon your animals. These are provisions that are in state law, but we also wanted them to be in our local ordinance. So, again, this, this, this chapter does contain the public nuisance provisions, and then provisions for potentially dangerous dogs or vicious dogs. So, that's a brief summary of chapter 6.04. This particular chapter was, was substantially modified. The, the second chapter in the ordinance is 6.08, which is licensing and vaccination. So, this chapter, even though we're proposing to repeal and replace it, the provision then there are substantially what was in this chapter before. We, we pulled out the portions for rabies and bites and put it into the chapter 6.04 that we just discussed, but consistent with what we have in place now, all dogs must be licensed. To license your, your dog, it has to have the rabies vaccination. And the licensing fees do run by calendar year, and every year, coinciding with licensing, in January, the city puts on a vaccination clinic. I did want to add on the licenses and vaccination, what we're, what we're not proposing is to have mandatory spaying or neutering or microchipping. So, that's not a provision that's in our existing code, nor are we proposing it in our new code. So, the staff's recommendation is for the city council to read by title only and wait further reading and introduce the attached ordinance to adopt a new Chapter 6.04 and a new Chapter 6.08. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and respond to any questions.
I thank you very much, Director Molina. I have a few questions to start with. One, I'm going to start with the, the question about licensing, and I know that, that you're changing the ordinance and we've had this ordinance, but can you explain the value of licensing and requiring licensing of dogs?
So, we, we require the licensing of dogs primarily as a, a method to en, ensure that animals are, or dogs are vaccinated with rabies, with the rabies vaccination. And that's really important because it's a protection for the animal and it's a protection for another animal or a person. So, if that, if that, if that animal gets bitten by a dog, it has the rabies vaccination and vice versa. If it were for, for whatever reason to bite someone or by another dog, it's also protected. And so, that's, that's the primary reason, and it's required by law to have the rabies vaccination.
Okay. And so, if a dog has been vaccinated in the middle of the year, but we have our licensing at the first part of the year, how do we handle that?
So, we, we license the dog as long as it's vaccinated at the time that the licensing's being done. So, let's say in January, we renew the licenses, but somebody's license, vaccination is expiring in June. We license them for the whole year. Our, our office specialist monitors and tracks, and then we'll send out a notice to say, your rabies vaccination is expiring, please provide a new, new vaccination date.
Okay. And then, lastly, when we have provisions for a number of dogs, if somebody has more dogs than the two that are allowed, where we'll be ripping dogs away from the residents so that they only have two, where we make them choose which two they will keep?
So, our, our main goal with all our code compliance is to obtain code compliance. And so, the, the law does say two dogs. What we would do is notify the person of the, of the law and where they're not compliant, and we would follow up through our code and compliance process with rein inspections and ultimately, the citation process. Because we, we, we don't have, the only time that the city council, well, I should, I should back up. The city council did adopt a policy about two years ago, grandfathering accounts that we had at that time that had two or more dogs. And that provision was your grandfather for those three animals or four animals, but once you come into compliance and you come back down to two animals, you, you cannot exceed that again. And so, there was that provision at that time, but that was just a snapshot of what was, what was licensed.
Okay. Thank you. Are there further questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse?
Ms. Molina, on a number of dogs, if somebody's taking care of a dog and you, now you have three dogs, or their family's out of town or something, and the animal control gets a complaint, what's the process for that? I mean, you're going to have a person saying, stating that the dog's at my house temporary, you know, it's licensed in Redlands. What's her process?
So, there is a, a provision for accepting dogs from the law, the dog licensing requirement. And so, on packet page 178, there's a provision, section 6.008120B, any dog or owned by or in charge of any person who is a non-resident of the city and is traveling through the city or is temporarily sojourning there and for a period not exceeding 30 days. So, if you're, you're watching someone's dog for a period of less than 30 days, you don't have to get a license.
Okay. One other question. I don't know how the, I haven't even taken my two dogs to the dog park yet, but if a person brings more than two dogs at the dog park, are, are we looking for license? Are they looking at that? I mean, anything's going on with the dog park?
So, with regard to the dog park, we do have a regular schedule to visit the dog park and ensure that, that dogs do have licenses. Again, it's a safety issue with regard to the rabies vaccination.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Molina. I will open it up to public comment. Do we have requests to speak on this item? Thank you. All right. We'll begin with Jeremy Rivera.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Jeremy Rivera, Van Buren. What started this? The city pushed a flyer out that says, we're going to go canvass the neighborhood. We're going to go door-to-door. Wow. Are we in a police state? Should I notify and, you know, start putting tattooed numbers on my dogs or my arms like it's, you know, World War II? Because that's what it feels like. So, it kind of ticked me off, and I thought, well, they did this with the vehicle, you know, sitting on property and all that stuff. And the first time I saw that, ah, you know, okay, that's probably not the best way to go. Are we in HOA? What's going on? So, I put it out there for our fellow community members. 231 hits on Facebook. I know. Facebook City Hall, Robles likes Facebook City Hall. I love Facebook City Hall. So, obviously, Mr. Duffy caught wind of this. So, we set up a nice little meeting, Mr. Duffy, Ms. Molina, and myself and my daughter, and we talked about dogs. And it was a pleasant meeting. But being on the Park and Rec Council and how we like to have all these wonderful city events, why can't we have like a dog party? So, they can get licensed, vaccinated at the dog park, bring in some vendors, maybe have a doggy show contest, bring best pet costume, because this is not who we are as a city. We're not going door-to-door. So, then I started asking questions about, there's 3,500 households approximately. I'd like to see how this is going to go door-to-door, because we have one in code enforcement officer full-time and one part-time. I don't know how that's going to hit all 3,500 houses. So, is this going to be selective enforcement? So, let's start talking about that. All right. So, 6.04110, section V, it says unreasonably annoying or annoyed. That's very vague language, is the dog, unreasonably annoying me? So, because we're trying to rewrite code, so let's talk about language. And then excessive disturbing noise, V5, vague language again. And then, I want to get to 6.0802, because I'm running out of time, two dogs. I'm in disagreement with the two dogs. This was brought to council two years ago. We talked about this in our meeting. Just to give you some numbers, Redlands, three dogs. Loma Linda, four dogs. City of Colton, 10 dogs. City of Los Angeles, four dogs. City of Highland, four dogs. City of San Bernardino, three dogs. Rialto, four dogs. Fontana, three dogs. Why do I have to have two dogs? Maybe I want to have four dogs. And I think that we want to, you know, if we want to adopt dogs, we should be able to adopt dogs. Why? Why, we got all these dogs in the pound and they need to be rescued. I love dogs. I don't take my dogs to the dog park, but, you know, that's where I want to go. But the language needs to be tightened up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Jeremy Briggs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Proton, members of council. Just wanted to comment on this, sorry, 22547, Manona Drive. Just wanted to come on this. I understand the ordinance, I understand the code enforcement, what we need to do, quality of life. You guys all know I'm about the best of this city. But animals is, as Mr. Rivera said, I mean, the way the letter went out, it felt a little threatening. It felt like we're going to go out there, remove your animals if you have more than two. For me personally, I would like to see that number raised as well. This is the first time I've been heard about it. Yes, I should have done my research in the city. But everywhere I've been, I've always known four dogs is the limit. And I would love to see an amendment come out that says that we can revise this. There's no reason why we can't do that. I mean, two dogs is way less. We've got family members with kids. If a house has got five kids in it, they're not just going to have two dogs. Each one of them kids is going to want their own dog. I mean, you've got multifamily, you've got people, families living in multi-houses. The grandma's going to have a dog, the aunt's going to have a dog, the kids are going to have a dog. I'm not saying let's have six, seven dogs, but I think a four limit dog would be great for this city and for the community with the kids. I mean, I grew up with having dogs. I'm sure majority of everyone in this room grew up with animals, all kinds of animals. I've got friends in here that are sitting in here that have horses, goats, whatever they are. It's for the kids. If I could take my kids up there every day, I would, you know? And to say that we're going to put an ordinance on this because, and all we're doing is taking it away from the kids. We're not, that's the way I'm looking at this. It's just like, I would hate to tell my child, "I got to take one of your dogs because the city said I can only have two dogs." Are you guys going to come out there and explain to my child with a broken heart that we're taking one of their dogs because the city said we can only have two? I don't want to be in that conversation with her. She, my kids do everything, the dogs help calm them down when they're having a bad day, they can just sit with the dogs. That's what they are for, to calm, be a family member and help. Besides that, I only had one comment in here, was the potentially dangerous dog and vicious dogs. What makes a potentially dangerous dog? Just because it's a certain breed? Any dog can be a dangerous dog. I would just hate for us to have restrictions on what type of breed we have because that breed has a bad reputation. It doesn't matter about the breed, it's about how it's raised and how it's trained. Any dog can be a vicious dog. So I just want to make sure we're not just highlighting that by breed of the animal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Our next speaker is Tricia Hollis.
Good evening, thank you. So this is emotional, obviously. For many people, our dogs are like our children, they're our family members. But I'm going to try to make it not so emotional. And so just some consideration points. As far as licensing, we're not looking to be out of compliance. We license our vehicles, ourselves, our dogs. So rather than say, you're allowed two dogs, that's the limit, how about a comprehensive licensing process where you have, this is a set rate for the first two, and then a different rate for the third, fourth, et cetera? Because what I see is a lot of people might be actually dissuaded from complying with licensing because they don't want to get their dog, their rabies vaccination, because that might ding to the city, "I have a dog." And so now we have people not vaccinating their dogs because they don't want to have the city come after them and say, "You're out of compliance." Well, they have three, maybe small dogs. And that's perfectly a reasonable amount for their home size. It's not an apartment setting with Great Danes. So I think that's another thing that maybe should be taken into consideration. You're proposing a requirement upon an entire city. We have home sizes that are different across the board. We have small condos with a patio. We have multiple acre homes that have plenty of room for a dozen dogs. So to have the same rule imposed upon every household, that seems very narrow-minded. And it does not seem comprehensive. It does not, it's not an intelligent way to look at it. The other thing is, if we are requiring licensing, which absolutely I agree with, let's look at the intelligence side of that as well. If we want to have our dogs safe and protected, we have an overabundance of dogs that are being killed every day at shelters, on the streets because they're stray. If we really want to protect our dogs, then let's look at microchipping, let's look at spay and neuter clinics, let's look at being a more intelligent community to protect our animals and protect our citizens, to have safe, healthy dogs, safe, healthy communities. So it's just some points of consideration to put thought into it. Instead of just blanket, two dogs, every house, don't care who you are, don't care what size home you have, don't care how many people, everybody is different. And I think it's a very limited way that the city is looking at this right now. So I think everybody, it could be a win-win situation if we look at it with a little bit more thought and consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollis. I appreciate you sharing your opinions. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening, Bobby Forbes, Burns Avenue, Grand Terrace. So a couple of years ago, when it came up to bring the number of pets down, I was here. I spoke then, probably only a couple of other people spoke then, too. Very little turnout. Facebook, I wasn't very active on the Facebook page at that point, but I tried to get people to come. I'm glad to see the number of people that are here this evening to talk about it. This is not just about dogs, it's about cats, it's about birds, turtles. We have a turtle that gets out in town every once in a while, we all know that. It's not just about the dogs, but it's mostly about the dogs because I think that's what most people have in the community. There's service dogs, there's companion dogs. There's so many different types of dogs at this point that I'm sure that your ordinance won't be able to address those. So all of a sudden, you're going to see a really big surge in those vests coming out on the dogs that are being walked in town. I don't think that this ordinance was, what I saw on the little blue paper was really about the numbers of dogs. Because I didn't see the packet that you have, so maybe it's in there. But I'm glad that he brought up on 92313, and I'm happy to see the hundreds of comments, some of which were repetitive, some of the people didn't know, some of the people didn't live here. It's nice to see that people are paying attention now. Maybe the dog park has brought that awareness out because there's more people out in public. The only dog that has ever bit me in my 63 years of life is a pug. Jumped up and bit me in the thigh and drew blood. And it was my client's dog. So I don't like pugs, okay? But I'm not afraid of pit bulls or German shepherds or Wottweiler Zürd or any of those top five that people don't, aren't supposed to have in their households. That darn little dog was aggressive. And I never went in their house again. I sold it, but I stayed away from that dog. And I say that in jest only because whether it's a pit or shepherd or a chihuahua, my little chihuahua would bite my housekeeper every time she came to the house, when he was there, when she was there. You know, she hated the dog. And the dog knew it, I guess. But it's just one of those things that we all live our lives differently and we take care of our pets. And I pay the fees. Old dogs, some of them can't take those rabies shots anymore. They get sick. You want your dog to die because you're giving it a rabies shot because the City of Grand Terrace or the State of California says you have to have that shot every three years? I get my tetanus shot because I have animals and I have a tendency to get hurt once in a while. So I need that tetanus shot every 10 years or so, when I remember. But I think that this is important that you review and don't just automatically change it again. Now that we have people in the community paying attention and talking to you, we have a couple of different people on the council, and I think it's important that you listen and give the community the opportunity to give some input. Please have a workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. All right, that was my last request to speak. You have another one?
I have two letters that we did receive, one via, two of them actually via email.
Okay. Please, please read.
We have one from Kim Stromwell. She is a resident of Grand Terrace and lives on Michigan Avenue, and she has requested that the council consider increasing the number of dogs allowed per household to three. She stated a check surrounding cities shows they allow on average three to four, and asked if there was a way that licensing would be issued on the dogs during vaccination schedules. Apparently, meaning if a dog received a vaccine in April, it would go for the entire year to the following April, not until December 31st of that year. If she follows those guidelines, the dog would be out of compliance for months until receiving the next yearly or three-year vaccine. And that was her suggestion. The second letter that we received is quite lengthy. It's a two-page email, but it's from Debbie Winningham. What she is requesting is that the city council consider allowing five to six pets per household with no more than four dogs and increase fines for residents who fail to vaccinate and register. We will include her letter in the packet when we post the minutes on the website. But she's also made several other suggestions on how to change the ordinance a little bit and just ways that can help individuals maintain increased pet ownership.
And she also included subsidized spay, neuter and vaccination clinics. So we should make that information available to the public as well.
Of course.
All right. Thank you for that. We will close public comment and bring it back to council to further discuss or consider a motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Allen.
Well, it's pretty obvious that the number of pets or number of dogs per household is the issue that concerns most of these people. I really was impressed with the thought that was put into a couple of these, this letter, especially from Ms. Winningham that the city clerk just referenced. And also to the comments by the people here on some ways that this can be amended that would be, in the words of one of them, is a win-win for everyone. I'd like, I think we need to consider those. Thanks.
Councilmember Hesse.
All right. How am I going to start? You know, I'm a dog lover also. And my ferocious dog was a Dalmatian that bit the neighborhood kid. Now, you'd think Walt Disney wouldn't have 101 Dalmatians, you know, but unfortunately that happened. But by the grace of God, my dog was licensed and has vaccine because that's the first thing they look at when they quarantine. And then, of course, my insurance company, if I didn't have all that done, it wouldn't have been covered, it would have been on my expense. But thank God, the kid wasn't seriously hurt. You know, that was my main concern. And, you know, then again, responsible pet owners, they take care of their animals because of the diseases. When this is, I remember when this was brought up a couple of years ago. And one of the reasons why it was brought up, because we have people that complain that some people have way too many dogs and it's being a nuisance and they're not getting their license and the dogs bit their kids and stuff. So as a city, you've got to look at both sides of the fence. Do I think two dogs are, you know, I don't agree on the two dogs. I mean, I think four dogs is adequate. I mean, that'd be something that the council has to decide, but back then, we decided on two dogs or two cats. I think four animals in general should be the way to go. Some people are cat people and they got four cats, you know? You know how you could license a cat? Cats take off. I'm not a cat person. They got minds of their own. You know, I think if they put a license on a cat, you'll probably ask where your license at. I don't know, Darcy, is that right? I have no idea.
My cat asks for my license all the time.
Okay, so, you know, I have to show the driver's license off. But anyway, I think that's something that, as a council, hopefully we could consider. But as far as the vaccine and licensing clinics, I know Mr. Duffy, and I've been on him about it, and he's been having these clinics and these vaccines and licensings, and they had it at the dog park. I mean, I registered my puppy at the dog park. We have it all the time, and I only see like a couple of people show up. And we do everything in the world possible to make it easy for them. We had Dr. Sieg come in, I mean, it's low cost, and I think we even put out, you know, if any waivers or something, I even offered to pay for a couple of shots or anything. But there's things there. I take my dogs to the Humane Society because it's cheaper there. You know, you just make appointments really easy and you have a spade and vaccine, and I get mine taken care of and also microchipped. So there's good animal owners out there, then again, we have the bad ones that don't care. I have a neighbor who has five dogs that don't care and they bark all the time. Now, the dog catcher came and tried to get them at one time, and that was when we had San Bernardino. So we had to really look and, you know, yeah, some of this language in here has to be amended. And it's just how you read it, like one person could interpret it one way and one person the other way. But, you know, the city has been proactive with the vaccines and the licensed clinics. We're not here to make money off the license. You don't make money off it. It also is a CYA. That's all it is. And I'm not going to, you guys know what the abbreviation is, I don't need to put it on the minutes. But it's for you and your own safety, and like Mr. Wilson said earlier, you know, for your insurance. You don't want to be out of pocket. And the last thing you want to see, like I saw when that little boy running down a street hole in his face, bleeding, and my dog bit him. I don't even know why my dog bit him. They're out there, my sons are playing and the dog just got aggressive. And dogs, they're our pets, they're our family, but they're still animals, you know, and they could turn on a dime. They could have bad days, too. So as a city, you know, council member, we got to take care of both sides of the fence. And, you know, we are being proactive, we have been, and we always will be. And like I said, I thank Mr. Duffy and his staff coming out here and spending tonight, you know, getting those licenses and stuff. I mean, this takes away from the staff hour. They're trying to make it easy for residents to come out here and take care of it. So there'll be, the dogs will be safe and disease-free because the last thing we want to do, like I mentioned about, you know, diseases at the dog park, you know, there's, if you don't get your dog vaccinated for parvovirus, your dog can die of parvovirus. You know, there's different things that you have to do as a dog owner, and that's a responsibility. I know my son's a new dog owner and he didn't realize how much it costs to have a pet, you know? But you sign up for that responsibility, you've got to take it. I would like to entertain the motion of changing it from two to four dogs if we can, bring it back to us, our four pets in general, and go from there. That's all I have for a comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Any further comments? Councilmember Robles.
Confused because I'm seeing an ordinance having to do with licensing vaccinations. I just want to say that I understand, and I have, I'm not on Facebook 9213, so I don't know what you folks are out there talking about, but there seems to be some deliberations happening on Facebook. And the Brown Act says that by law, there's supposed to be a time and noticing, we're supposed to have these discussions of deliberations here, and I'm seeing things pulled off the agenda. And I'm not being consulted. I don't know what this discussion is. There was no, no staff recommendation about what was happening on Facebook. I would just say, though, that as, I had a dog and the city did come and peek over my fence and pound on my door, not knock on my door, they pounded on my door. This is like 16 years ago. And I don't know what was going on there, but I was offended by that approach. As far as the council seems to be wanting to look at the dog ordinance again, no one, there really wasn't anybody here. There was Bobby Forbes and maybe one other person. So I just don't know. The only issue I have is I like to have something that we follow. And apparently, what we had was, some people didn't want to, the city, long before I joined the council, had changed how many dogs. And folks said, "No, but I want these dogs." So then the city tries to accommodate everybody. So there, they came to us and say, "There's these dogs that were supposed to ease out. Once they passed away, they weren't supposed to be replaced so they could stick to the ordinance." So I have no problem. I do have a problem with the number of dogs. I think 10 dogs is too much in the higher end. I don't know if it's possible to do it by, you know, how many acres you have. Doesn't seem to be. But those are some good suggestions. But, you know, so I just think, though, that at some point, we've got to have some rules and regulations, and of course, those can be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. With discussion of potentially dangerous and vicious dogs, there is no listing of the types of animals or the breeds of dogs that are potentially vicious. And I think this is a pretty comprehensive ordinance, both of them are, to have a real discussion about, line by line, I think it would take a workshop. Mr. Duffy, if you had a workshop, how many people did you have show up for your Sign Code workshop that you had? for your Sign Code workshop that you had?
I think there was five businesses that showed up for the Sign Code workshop. That was just, is it from recently? Or are you talking, that was just about five, five businesses.
Okay. Do you think that there would be enough interest from the dog-owning public in this city that they would come together and have a discussion with you about this?
I believe so. I mean, if the council wants a workshop, we'll promote the workshop to try to get input from the residents.
Right. Because my opinion is that the city attorney went through, and you did a lot of work to bring us up to a position where we have something to point to and say, "This is how we're going to proceed when it comes to a vicious dog or a barking dog," and what it takes for licensing and all that. But at the end of the day, what it comes down to also is that we are a community, and the ordinances that we have in our community, in order to have compliance, we should have buy-in by our community members. I, for one, would be for having a workshop, knowing that coming out of that workshop, we would have something that at least we have participation in. And so if I could understand from my, if I could understand from my colleagues if you would be in agreement to have staff work on an ordinance with a community group that would go through the entire entirety of both ordinances and come to an agreement on what they believe is reasonable.
I agree, Mayor, that give a workshop and come to agreement. And I don't know if you want to put another vaccine clinic in there with it. Who knows? Bring the dogs to the workshop. But, you know, I want to thank the city staff for doing all that work for us and making it easy because I bring my dogs. But I agree on another workshop, our workshop, and then get the word out there for this, you know? The animal lovers. And even, you know, invite your neighbors. You know, they've got their dogs and stuff. And they're not, I'm not on 92313 either, but they don't, you know, they don't know. A lot of people aren't on the computer, or they don't read the paper. And I had a neighbor, he didn't know about the three dogs. And he's actually a retired sheriff. So let your neighbors know, spread the word. And that way, our city staff, once again, do their hard work and then get it done. So that's all I have.
Okay. So Councilmember Hussey, you're for giving direction to have a workshop? Councilmember Allen?
I support that. I was going to mention that on packet page 148, under impoundment of animals, where it talks about if the owner can't be found or contacted, the dog will be impounded, and the photograph with identifying info will be posted on Facebook. So maybe we should be a little more specific about than just the word "Facebook" in there.
Okay. And there probably needs to be somewhere other than just Facebook because...
I agree, yeah. And that would, we could apply that to the announcement for a workshop.
Okay. Councilmember, or City Manager Duffy?
Yes. The staff report lists Facebook, but the actual item in the section of the code says, means that are necessary to try and to promote the information. So it's not, Facebook isn't referenced in the ordinance, but a way to get the message out.
All right, that's good. Councilmember Robles, will you support a workshop? Okay. And Mayor Protem? Okay. So there you are. If you would please, my, again, staff did a very good job of updating these. But I think that some input from the residents would be nice. Would you like a vote, Mr. City Attorney?
No, just a quick comment. The intent of staff was to bring our code up to date. Currently, our code was adopted in 1978. It was a county code with some revisions in 2003. And so the goal of staff was to look at the county code, which in many parts doesn't really apply to us, and bring something that's enforceable and something that's more modern. So I just want to provide that to the council.
Okay, thank you. So if staff would take these back, have a meeting, and then bring them back to us for consideration, I would, we would appreciate that. And we will move on to item nine, which is the April 2019 Award of Community Benefit Fund in the amount of $310 to the REC Center for the 2019 Easter Egg Hunt activity. Ms. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report before you is a grant application that the city received from the REC Center. The staff report supports the following goals: ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous review of grant applications received. And goal number four: develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community youth programs. As I mentioned earlier, we received an application from the REC Center to help them, help pay for the costs for the Easter Egg Hunt. The Easter Egg Hunt event is open to the entire community to enjoy with vendors and performers from the REC Center classes. As shown on packet page 199, the REC Center has received five other grant awards from the City Benefits Fund, two of which have been their prior Easter Egg events. Please disregard that slide. They are requesting $310 to help them with the cost of the Easter Egg activity. So if we look at the benefits fund, again, at the beginning of the year, our annual total amount is $20,000. We have spent $12,940 to date. If this grant award is approved, we will have a balance of, I believe, $6750. That concludes my presentation. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Do we have questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey.
On the balance $6750, when do we renew that balance and bring it back up? I mean, how long is that good for the, our balance?
Until the end of June, sir.
End of June. All right. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Robles.
I was just thinking, for $310 that we're doing every year, is there somewhere where we could put this in our budget? So it's not part of, they don't have to sit through an entire meeting for $310.
And I had that in my notes, and I apologize. I spoke with the city manager. Yes, when we present a 910 budget, we do have certain activities that we request a waiver for their permit fee. We will be adding the REC Center for their annual Easter Egg Hunt activity.
All right, thank you. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Is, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Allen.
Is there anybody from the REC Center here?
Yes, they are. They could wave to you if you'd like.
Yes. Yeah, Ms. Ariza from the REC Center is here. If you have any questions for the organization.
That'd be great, thank you. Can Ms. Ariza come to the microphone?
Good evening.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you a question about your activities and your fundraising. And so maybe you could let us know, how do your, the participants in your program perform fundraising? And over the, for the activities that they participate in?
So this specific activity is a community event, not specific to REC Center, but to the entire community of Grand Terrace. So in regards to that, we do generally have to pull from our general fund to pay for the fees associated with the Easter Egg Hunt, as well as rely on community volunteers and donations. So that's in regards to the Easter Egg Hunt specifically. Now, in regards to our entire program, we serve just under 300 on average per year. And about 2,000 total reach, that would include our Easter Egg Hunts, our toy drives that we do, and different things that are more community outreach-type of events. And with that, we have an annual expenditure of about $63,000 on average. So we are doing a lot on a very small budget. So every, every dollar counts. And that is why we seek grants whenever possible. In regards to fundraising for our specific programs, in regards, like, for example, our teen advisory board and some of our other programs, there are different fundraisers that occur if they have a project-specific fund that they are trying to raise. So a perfect example would be the last go-around when we had our teen advisory board that came in here and presented. They were looking to fund their Disneyland trip. Now, their program specifically isn't just a Disneyland trip. There's a lot more that goes into that. They are required to mentor the youth of the community through our various camps. They are required to do different community service. You'll see quite a few of them out this weekend doing some community service. So there's a lot more to it than just that. But when they do fall short, they are required to figure out how to make those funds, whether it be through fundraising. So some examples are, at the Easter Egg Hunt, you'll see them raising funds through different activities, usually serving the youth. So they'll have different carnival activities at the Easter Egg Hunt. They also participate in our annual luau. They'll raise funds there as well. And so there's just a different variety of activities that they're doing to also supplement their funding needs.
Well, thank you. I do remember, I attended the luau at the church, the last one you had. And I do remember there was a lot of, like, bake sales going on outside and other activities for fundraising. So thank you very much for that, Ms. Ariza.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariza.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussey has a question for you.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I remember a couple of years ago, you were asking for, like, plastic egg donations and candy. Are you still asking for donations? If you are?
We, yes, we have a great need. So a huge part of our egg donations would come from our Bloomington community each year. And this year, with us not having our Bloomington community, we're seeing less donations coming in, seeing as though that the event is in Grand Terrace and serving Grand Terrace. We'd love to see an increase in donations from our Grand Terrace community. So that would be amazing. We'd also like to invite you guys out. We would love to have you on Sunday to be a part of that event.
And what do you, do you need specific on that for the donations for Easter?
We're looking for pre-filled, wrapped, or some type of toy item. No loose jelly beans or Skittles or anything like that. It needs to be pre-filled plastic eggs.
Okay, one last thing. Are, you going to hide rocks, like the GT rocks? Because I know these kids have been practicing all year finding rocks, so...
That would be quite fun. We hadn't planned that. But we do have things, for example, chills, gift certificates that will be in the mix. Nickelodeon Pizza usually has some goodies. So there'll be a lot of goodies out there.
Okay, where do we drop the donations off at for you? I mean, can you give a location?
Absolutely. So our last drop-off location would be Thursday night at Azure Hills.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariza.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Community Benefit Fund grant application for $310 for the 2019 Easter Egg Hunt activity.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes. Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes. And Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 11, which is the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and KTUA to prepare the Barton Road Streetscape Plan and appropriation of bond funds. Ms. Sandra Molina, Director and Development Services.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this evening, for the council, is a Professional Services Agreement, as indicated by the mayor, for KTUA to prepare the Barton Road Streetscape. This item does support goal number three, to promote economic development, because the Streetscape Plan will result in an enhancement to the Barton Road Corridor, which is our commercial corridor. So a bit of background, on October 9th, the city council did approve priority projects for the use of our bond proceeds. And this Barton Road Streetscape project was one of those priority projects. So we, staff did send out a request for proposals to 11 consulting firms. And one response was received. And so that was KTUA. But the proposal was reviewed. Staff did work with the consultant to make sure that the proposal met the scope of the project. So to talk about the scope a little bit, so what we wanted to have is a Streetscape that looks at landscaping, street lighting, potential for street furniture, or city identifiers. And what we wanted to do was build off the landscape treatment that is going to occur with the interchange project. And so the scope asked for the consultant to build off of that. And we're looking at three different, excuse me, four different segments. Excuse me, and this is the area just west of the, what will be the roundabout area. And then you have a Grand Terrace Road here. So this is one segment. The second segment goes then from the east portion of the interchange to approximately New Commerce Way. And then we would have a fourth segment, which goes from Commerce Way, Vivienda, to Canal, and then from Canal to just past Mount Vernon. And so this, each segment would be looked at. The intent is to have a cohesive yet unique design to each segment. And so that's, that's the challenge we've given to KTUA and that they responded to. The scope of work also includes a stakeholder outreach meeting to the commercial corridor. The KTUA will prepare a concept design, again, parkway landscaping, decorative lighting, street furniture, and identifiers. They will provide a final design with cost estimates. And part of this project that they include is a 3D fly-through video. We will also share with them our 3D video that Mr. Duffy's been working and enhancing as projects are completed. And so we will provide that to them. So with that, we would ask that the council approve the agreement in the amount of $60,000. Authorize the city manager to execute the contract, subject to city attorney approval. Appropriate $60,000 from the general fund 2011 bond proceeds balance, and adopt a resolution approving the expenditure of the bond proceeds for this project. With that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Director Molina. Do we have questions of staff? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Do we have requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I apologize.
I forgot to mention that from KTUA, Joe Punsel, and is here, should the council have any questions for him? Thank you.
All right. Do you have further comments, sir? No? Okay. What would the council like to do with this item?
I'll move approval of the recommendations, one, two, three, four. Approve a professional services contract of KTUA in the amount of $60,000 for preparation of Barton Road streetscape plan, subject to city attorney approval, asked to form. Authorize city manager execute contract, subject to city attorney approval, asked to form. And three, appropriate $60,000 from the general fund 2011 bond proceeds balance to account 10-9-5-5-800XX for KTUA Barton Road streetscape plan. And four, adopt a resolution of the city council, the City of Grand Terrace approving expenditure of bond proceeds to contract professional services for the Barton Road
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes with council members Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson is absent.
Right. And we have no request for future agenda items tonight to consider, so we will go to city council, excuse me, city manager communications.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Earl Duffy, city manager. I did want to just very briefly talk with the council about some of the things that I heard tonight regarding, just point of clarification that I'm gonna report back, and I'll put it on the report backlog in terms of what type of pesticides that are being used at the dog park. And there was some concern or a question about future light poles in areas that we don't have lights in. And I think it's an important point to make is, as part of the 5G network, in order to prepare the smart cities for the future, you have to have a certain level of service in terms of connectivity, or else future cars that are self-driving vehicles, there'll be gaps and you can't provide the service. And so one of the things that we should have a conversation about is, what do we do when there's a need to fill in those areas? Example being Edison will put a light pole in anywhere that we tell them to put a light pole in. So if we're able to coordinate that in the future, that might be helpful. So we'll have that conversation, we'll come back to the council on that. But my, quickly, my city manager's update report. Okay. So on Saturday, on April 13th through 19th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we have the volunteer pick-up, paint, and plant activity that we're doing with the city. I believe that this particular item...
Join us for the Keep Grand Terrace Beautiful Volunteer Community Cleanup Event on Saturday, April 13th. Volunteer to pick up trash, paint retaining walls, and plant new trees and plants throughout the Grand Terrace community. Volunteers will report to 22441 Barton Road, the site of the future grocery outlet at 8:00 AM. The city shuttle bus will transport volunteers to their various locations. All residents are also welcome to join us at Fitness Park for a ladybug picnic, starting at 11:00 AM. For more information, visit tinyurl.com/beautifulgt. We'll see you there.
We're not gonna eat them, are we?
No, we're not, but we'll be releasing 36,000 ladybugs into the park. And they, ladybugs are great, great ways to fight pests without using, you know, harmful chemicals.
Can we have volunteers work on my backyard too, please?
I also wanted to remind the council that on Sunday, May 5th, 2019, the annual city's art show, sponsored by the Grand Terrace Historical Cultural Society, will be back from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And that's gonna be on Sunday, May 5th, 2019. With that, Mayor and council, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I put away everything, so. I think I need to, I think I need to memorize the adjournment. But we have no closed session tonight, so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk, and the request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. I thank everybody who came out and gave us their perspective on items that were on our agenda tonight, and thank you to my colleagues for your discussions. Thank you to staff for your work, and we are adjourned.